Ladies and gentlemen, the regularly scheduled meeting of the Council of the Town of Southern Shores for October the 16th is in session. I invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a moment of silence. Council, we have an agenda. Do you hear a motion to approve or a motion to amend? What did I hear?
A move we approve the agendas presented.
Have a second. A little in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. We have an agenda. And the first thing on the agenda is a very pleasant exercise, recognizing two of our valued employees for five years of continuous service to our town. And I would like for Harold and David to join me up here and we'll have a little.
Southern Shores Town Council would like to thank you for your five years of service, you know, dedicated employees and help to make the town a better place. Imagine if we could see you on the tractor, I'd like to see those right away, the paddies cleaned up. Congratulations, and we're very proud to have you. I will show up the plaque for you. That's all right. And of course, by your service. And on the left, my left here, we have David Foster, the Southern Shores Town Council would like to thank you for your five years of service as a dedicated employee that helped to make the town of Southern Shores a better place to live. David, proud to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. The good work that you do. And he's a ex-Marine, but that's all right. And there's your five year pin. Thank you very much. Good to have you, Mr. Hurner.
We have with us this morning, Mr. Rob Clendenon from Base Management. At our last meeting, Councilman LaHawn asked some questions about the process and we couldn't answer them, so we invited Mr. Clendenon to come in and tell us something about waste management. This is Rob Clendenon.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. You know, quite frankly, I'm surprised that with the audit report and recycling on the agenda that there's not more people here, but you know, as a former auditor, I could say that in all honesty. After only three weeks, you know, we have a very brief history, but I'll give you what we have so far. We're delighted to, you know, to be partnering with Southern Shores and collecting recycling. So far, we've delivered about 26 new carts. So you may have seen some around town, the green ones with the yellow lids. Those are our new style carts. The program has collected about, pretty much a consistent number of about 10 tons of material per week, so we've gotten about 30 tons so far since we've started the first of October. In that same time period, we've recorded four people who've reported that we didn't collect them, four missed pickups, we call it. So, you know, although we like to have none, I think four as a transition is not a bad start. You know, we hope to keep that number as low as possible, but so far, we've gotten four. The material that we're collecting is being delivered to Tidewater Fiber in Chesapeake, where it's sorted and baled and sold to market. That's the same facility that the material was going to before. As you may or may not know, I guess our bulky, our first bulky waste collection is scheduled for this Friday. We're going to do that now. We do a similar program at the town of Duck, and we pick up bulk in Corolla as well, so we're very familiar with that process of collecting bulk on the outer banks. The other thing I wanted to highlight for you is that we are scheduled and are installing a compressed natural gas system and fueling station in our facility, and you should see some new compressed natural gas collection vehicles in the area before the end of the year. So we're, eventually, we'll convert our entire fleet to compressed natural gas and remove the diesel fueled vehicles. So, and with that, that's really all I had. We, you know, again, we're happy to partner with you, and I'm happy to answer whatever questions you might have that I didn't cover. Yes, sir?
I have a few questions. I noticed that WMI has a lot of things on the website that shows your recycle centers and how you separate out your recycle material. And I was wondering, since you're claiming single stream recycling, do you folks handle one through seven plastics? And other questions, do you recover thin film plastics? And what do you do with styrofoam? And how do you handle the yard waste that you pick up? Where do you, what do you do with it?
One through seven plastics is a common question. Right now, all those numbers are recyclable, they're able to be recycled, there's just not a market for anything beyond the beverage containers, which is a one through a three. So the four through seven are really not being recycled right now. Although they're recyclable, there's not a market for them. So there's not a place for them to be sold to if they were collected and sorted and baled. The fact that some of those get mixed in with the recycling stream is not a big problem. They tend to be just a small component that someone would, might consider a contaminant, but gets mixed in with recycling and baled and sold, and it ends up in the stream. But it's not something that we prefer to have because there's just not a market for it to be separated and baled. Now, in terms of styrofoam, it's the same, kind of the same answer. Styrofoam is recyclable, but there's no market to sell it. So right now, it is a contaminant and is not included in the recycling stream.
Film, the same thing?
Yes. Again, large quantities of film can be, if there's enough volume of it, can be baled and sold, but in a residential recycling stream, it's usually just a, you know, it's just a little bit of residue, pretty much. Was that, was that?
Yeah, and your yard waste, and as you're collecting that, what, where does it end up? What do you do with the yard waste?
Yard waste is, right now, is going into landfill. It's not, we're not, now, I don't know if yard waste is included in the curbside recycling program for Southern.
Large item pickup.
Large item pickup.
We have one day.
Oh, the large item, yeah. That material is, is going to go to landfill. It's not being recycled. The nearest yard waste processing facilities in Waverly, Virginia, you know, and it would be possible to take it there, but that wasn't what was contemplated in our collection service. Because it's, the material is going to essentially get mixed with all of the other bulky waste. So there's going to be brush and yard waste included with, you know, furniture and appliances and such. So it's really just going to be a mixed bag load. So since it's not being collected separately, it's all going to just go straight to a fill. And we'll be able to give you tonnage information and all that on what we've collected, so you know kind of what, what we're dealing with. And at the end of every quarter, I think we're scheduled to provide a report that shows the total volume collected. So we'll be able to track whether or not we're making improvements in the program and the percentage of the total waste that's being recycled versus being landfill. Now, obviously, our goal would be to increase that recycling percentage as we move through.
Do you ever anticipate having, WMI having its own recycle center rather than subcontracting it to Tidewater Fiber?
Yeah, you know, and it's a market driven decision. We used to have a facility in southeastern Virginia, and, you know, as contracts are won and contracts are lost, we lost contracts that supported that facility and then we closed it. So there's really not enough volume that's under our control to justify the opening of the facility, so we're using theirs. We have facilities almost identical to it, the same processing equipment facilities. It's, they have an outstanding facility, state of the art. So, you know, we're happy to partner with them and use it, and it's, we know that they're doing the right thing with the material.
Okay, thank you.
Aluminum foil. A lot of recycling places said that in landfill, if they're actually clean, what about recycling?
I mean, if there's aluminum foil in the material, it'd get mixed in with aluminum cans. So if you have clean aluminum foil, I would say throw it in there. It's not, as long as it's not contaminated with food.
I have a question that has absolutely nothing to do with recyc, well, it has something to do with recycling, but I don't know whether you recycle it. You mentioned the fact that you, you're going to compress natural gas vehicles.
Uh-huh.
Are they diesel vehicles, engine?
No, it's, it's, it's instead of a diesel engine.
Okay, so you're running, you're running standard, normal gas engines that are running?
Well, they're engines designed to run off of compressed natural gas.
Okay. Do you by any chance have any visions of collecting natural gas out of your waste piles and then using that gas?
We do.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
So that's when you get your, you're getting your compressed?
Well, we're not using that gas to fuel vehicles with.
Okay.
We're using that gas to fuel power generation systems and generating electricity and sending that back to the power grid. All of our landfills in Virginia are now equipped with power stations that we're extracting, it's methane gas out of the landfill that's been turned, compressed and then running generators and turning, turning filters.
Same basic gases, huh?
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, in Chesapeake, where our trucks are parked, we are installing a fueling system where we'll be able to plug all of our vehicles into it and they fuel up overnight. It's a slow process to fuel compressed natural gas, they have to stay plugged in overnight. And, but they burn much cleaner, there's, you don't have that exhaust. It's also a more economical way of running the vehicles. So, again, you should see them, they'll have a big, a different logo on the side of them as they'll say, you know, pink green, and you'll recognize that they're new compared to the ones you've seen so far.
I also have a question about aluminum foil. Lids, I know, sometimes those are pretty small, and you want to say, is that some base or?
Lids can be thrown in. The reason they generally don't like lids on the containers is because it all gets baled and compressed and packed, and with lids on them, they pop off. So, I mean, frankly, you can just take the lid off and throw it in there, it's not, it's not going to be a problem. It's such a small percentage of the overall volume, though, it's not going to make a big difference, but you, there's not a problem putting them in there.
Nice thinking, Chris.
Right, right. Anything else?
Anything else? Come on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have with us this morning Ms. Teresa Osborne of Dowdy and Osborne, who is to present the annual audit report. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, good morning. Good to see you all this morning. I am here this morning to present the results of the June 30th, 2012 audited financial statements for the town of Southern Shores. I'm pleased to report that the town has received an unqualified opinion on its financial statements, which is the best opinion you can receive, and this is outlined on pages one and two of your audit report, excuse me, of the financial statements. Additionally, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted, and this is outlined in the internal control report on pages 48 and 49 of the financial statements. The financial statements are about 49 pages long. You will be glad to know that I'm not going to go through those page by page with you this morning. I have taken the liberty of going through them and picking out what I think are the most important highlights, and I would like to go over those portions with you this morning. If I could draw your attention to pages 13 and 14. Out of all the pages in the audit report, I personally think these two statements give a board the best overview and the kind of information from which you may guide decisions that you make throughout the year. Last year, we implemented a new accounting standard which required your capital reserve fund to be consolidated with your general fund for financial reporting purposes. So when you look on pages 13 and 14, you can see that you have a major fund column, which is the first column, and it says general fund. Just keep in mind that that includes your general fund and your capital reserve fund. The non-major fund represents your cemetery fund. On page 14, in the statement of revenues and expenses and changes in fund balances, you can see that revenues, net revenues exceeded expenses by $1,039,751. That's in the, page 14, it's the third number up from the bottom in the first column. That's how much revenues exceeded expenditures by last year. It seems like an awful lot of money, and so I want to spend a few minutes with you this morning analyzing what appears to be a significant increase. I think that Peter handed out this spreadsheet to you. I put this together because that $1,039 certainly isn't, seems like a lot of money, but when you look at how it breaks down, you're going to see that it's not quite as much as what it looks like. While total fund balance increased by $1,039, if you'll look at this spreadsheet, you can see that the first column represents June 30th, 2011. Your total fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2011 was $3,534,298. And you can see that's made up of several different components. Starting at the top, of that 3.5 million, 36,000 of that is reserved for what we call prepaid expenses at the end of the year. Another 5,200 of that is reserved for drug enforcement, and another 326,000 of that was reserved by what we call state statute, which is basically receivables that you had at the end of the year. It was money that people owed you that you hadn't actually received at June 30th, so you can't really say that that's available since the money hadn't actually been received. So what that left you with was a starting balance in unassigned of $3,166,984. Then what we do is we came along in 2012, and we have to allocate that $1,039,751 to those different categories. And once we make those allocations, I just want to point out to you that we had to add a, we had to add a line there this year, and it's called reserve for encumbrances. That represents open contracts at June 30th, 2012 for which the town was obligated. That number consists primarily contracts related to the construction of Chickahaw Trail and other street projects. So you were already obligated for those projects at June 30th, so we have to pull those amounts out as well. We also increased your reserve by state statute because your receivables at June 30th were greater than they were the prior year because you were due, I would say, the largest part of that increase was a result of FEMA revenues for, from Hurricane Irene that you still hadn't received at June 30th. So once we back all those numbers out, we're actually adding $486,609 to your unassigned fund balance, giving you an ending unassigned fund balance of $3,653,593. Does anybody have any questions about that? I hope that kind of helps lay that out a little better.
It really does. The question I didn't catch was, which is the FEMA revenue that's associated with what, the state?
It's included in the 469,889, in that far right column.
Okay, okay.
It's included in there. It's a portion of that.
It's a portion.
That also includes occupancy tax and sales tax and land transfer tax that you had actually earned at June 30th for April, May, and June, but you didn't necessarily receive that until July and August.
Right, thank you.
So, excuse me, but that's roughly $100,000 real differential?
It is, yeah. I'm sorry, I can't remember the exact number of what that Irene was, but I would have to say the largest part of that increase would be related to Hurricane Irene. I want to say you had one open project at the end of the year that had not been closed out, and that would have been your debris removal contract. They would have paid you 75% of that upfront, and you were waiting for them to come back and do the final inspection.
Okay.
On our last meeting, or recent meeting, we enacted a budget amendment, budget minimum one, where we increased the undesignated fund balance by 402, increased the, actually, the capital improvement expenditure budget by a like amount. And I take that to be the 401,812 number, reserve for encumbrances.
That's correct.
Plus something, a little bit.
It's probably just a little bit of rounding there.
Yeah, okay. I am with you.
As you can see on page 13, we're back to that $3,653,593. If you look in the first column down towards the bottom, that's your unassigned amount. That represents 77% of your general fund expenditures for 2012. You have adopted a fund balance policy set in a target minimum of $1,750,000, which represents about 37% of the year's general fund expenses. So just to kind of give you a range of what your target is versus what your unassigned is. The town recognized significant increases in sales tax, occupancy tax, and land transfer tax revenues as a result of the tax increase in the prior year from 9.75 cents to 14 cents. As you recall, as you recall, there is a one-year delay before this tax increase affects shared intergovernmental revenues. So your land transfer tax, sales tax, and occupancy tax went up pretty significantly in the range of about 40%, because your proportionate share of the tax levy increased. And again, there's a one-year delay before that happens. The town had an excellent tax collection rate of 99.86%, with only $2,723 remaining at June 30th to be collected on ad valorem property taxes. There are a number of other statements included, however, these are the two statements that I feel provide you with the best synopsis of your financial position at year end. The remaining statements and notes provide more detailed information on these summarized statements. Does anybody have any questions for me this morning? Overall, I would just like to say that the town ended the year in excellent financial condition, and I would like to thank all of the town staff for their assistance during the audit. And I think my phone number is on the front page of that cover. If you have any questions come up after the meeting today, please feel free to call me.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I ask Ms. Osborne just a, a question for information purposes? Teresa, we do have a capital reserve fund that's set up by resolution, of course, in accordance with the state statutes. And the last time we, the council renewed that, of course, it is for capital projects for the town, which specifically states in their streets, bridges, canals, and buildings. And I just wondered if you could confirm with me that if the council were to place funds in that fund in any given year, even if they were unused in a particular year, as long as the fund was operable and in effect, they would just roll, continue right on in that fund by law, isn't that correct?
That's correct. They just roll right over.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, the 486,609 that basically was, was, what you heard was the increase, staff is just throwing out an idea for council to think about for future meetings, that since we are, do have the capital challenges for this year in the form of two other streets to, to engage in for rebuild, and of course, we do have the other projects that, that staff would like to throw out the possibility to council that this money be transferred into the capital reserve fund, since we're going to be needing it anyway, either this year or years after. But that's just an idea that we'd like to proffer to council for thought.
Are you referring to the 486,009?
Yes, sir, the 486,609.
Okay.
And if, to clarify, if we don't do that, we still use, can still use the money from the fund? I'm not objecting to it.
Yeah, if you don't do it, and then later, we see we need money, we would still have to transfer money into the capital reserve fund anyway.
Okay. Good.
I think I need to think about that a little bit personally before I would want to transfer.
This is saying at the end of the year, as the end of this audit, the amount in that fund is a $27,000.
Mm-hmm.
Right? But we'd have to look at our current budget also to see what we forecast for the coming year, I mean, for this year.
Well, you have, remember, you have forecast expenditures for two other streets. One is Honeysuckle and one is Duck Woods. Based on the way we're going right now, we're going to have to come back and revisit the cost when the consultant engineer comes in with a budget for Honeysuckle, knowing what we know about how much money is left in that budget that we did budget for.
The first three streets that we contracted came in over budget by about $100,000, I think.
I can't recall one off the top of my head.
You recalled, yeah, about $100,000 over budget, so.
I think as you address those projects in the coming year, it's just a good idea to just keep that 486 in the back of your mind, is being that number that you have to work with, depending on how those projects come in according to budget, and also for use in future projects.
Uh-huh.
As you, you know, it might be that you want to wait and see how these contracts come in on the existing ones that you bid, but, but just keep that 486 in the back of your mind. That's the number that you've got to work with above and beyond what you have in your budget this year. Does that make sense, Peter?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the concept that I'm proffering for thought to the council is that we have, the council has been budgeting capital projects from its general fund each year. If we were to shift that thought in funding the capital reserve fund at the time of the budget adoption, and then X number of weeks later, come back and budget from the capital reserve fund, I would suggest that might be a little bit easier for council to work with each year. It's just a thought.
So dividing the budget process, if you will?
Yes.
Okay.
Comment on that.
Excuse me?
Do you have a comment on that?
I don't. That, I see that work different ways in different places that I audit. I think it just is what you're comfortable with and what seems to work best for you. Sometimes, I mean, in most cases, it, it does work better to isolate the capital portion of your budget from your operating budget.
Well, one of the reasons I lean towards it, not making the decision today, of course, is because we made the commitment two or three years ago, the three cents of the tax will go to capital projects. So by transferring it, it makes it very clear to everybody that we're building a fund. To me, that's one side for absolutely doing it.
And the only thing you just, the only thing you have to keep in mind with that is that the capital reserve fund is just a holding fund. You can't actually spend money out of there, so you just have to be aware that you're going to be seeing budget amendments coming back from your staff to you to approve, to pull that money out of the capital reserve fund and put it back into the general fund when the money is spent. So you just have to get used to that, the fact that you're going to be seeing budget amendments for that, to move the money back and forth.
Well, I think we've been doing that, so, yeah. We're all right with it. I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I'm not speaking for council.
I would just follow up with a comment on that. That is correct, and also, state law limits the, once we put it in capital reserve fund, it can't come back into the general fund and be used for anything else but capital. So you can't mix it again with something other than capital.
That's why I said it makes it clear.
Yeah. That's why I am hesitant to leap into this today.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your being with us, and we especially appreciate the results of our last fiscal year. And in that connection, council. And in that connection, council, this very favorable result was a combination of revenues exceeding budget by a substantial amount. But it also was a result of management controlling our expenditures. And if you go to page forty, you will see that administration came in seventy-five thousand dollars under budget. A great result. You will see that planning inspections came in thirty-four thousand dollars under budget. A tremendous result. You will see that the police, public safety came in at ninety-three thousand four seven ten. That's about on page forty-one. There was even a five hundred dollar savings in Ocean Rescue, and I don't know how that came about. The environmental protection transportation, where we have our street construction program, that result of four thirty fifty-three, as you know, results from work not completed and not built. And we can't take credit for that. We can't give great credit to that to the streets, although they do have a part in that. They came in under budget excluding the streets improvement program. So that was a great result. We came in forty-two thousand eight fourteen under, on solid waste. And this, these results are a result of management attention to detail and control of expenditures. And I just want to commend the town manager and the department heads for that great result. I think it was something to be proud of. My hat's off to the youth department heads for that work. Council, do you have any other questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I would like to make one statement, which just echoes yours just a bit, but this is just one year, the last year. And ever since Peter's been here, it's been a continual, never-ending reduction of expenses. And unless you realize what existed three years ago, for example, the legal services, I think it was eighty-five thousand dollars, and now it's twenty thousand. So there's a sixty-five thousand dollar, three-year reduction in legal services. So if you just go back three and look at stuff, it becomes quite interesting. So it's, this is just a one-year reduction in costs, so I think that's a thing to look at also.
Any other comment? No? We will move on. We have a consent agenda. It's a simply a pro forma acceptance and approval of records, retention, and disposal schedule. No, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
You have a second?
I'll say.
Any other discussion? All of them in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an approved records, retention, and disposition schedule. Council, we have under tab three, the minutes of October the second, two thousand and twelve. What's your pleasure?
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All of them in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public comments? Anybody signed up? At our last meeting, Steve Lambert from the Elbow Borough Commission was with us to discuss the Dare County Contra-Transitation Plan. He asked us to approve some numbers, but we didn't have the numbers. But Steve is back. Welcome back, Steve.
Good morning. Well, do you guys have, first off, do you guys have any questions about the numbers?
I do have some questions about the numbers.
Go for it.
Great, let's hit it.
You're talking about the Southern Shores numbers?
Yes, I don't care about the rest of the numbers. The style here is what interests me. Let's just pick, let's pick, I don't care, East Dogwood, it doesn't make any difference. Mile, the distance is one point seven miles. Existing capacity is twelve thousand six hundred. That is vehicles per what?
The capacity? Is, that's just the capacity at a day, twelve thousand.
So that's vehicles, vehicles per day, okay. So it's twelve thousand vehicles per day already, that's its capacity. We actually, in two thousand twelve, AADT, it only had ten thousand one hundred a count, is that correct? Or is that why I'm reading this wrong?
That's the average annual daily traffic. So that's, you know, when you see all the traffic counters out on the roads, they take those at different times during the year. They put those into the, they have a computer program that basically puts those all together and calculates an average day.
So ten thousand one hundred cars travel on East Dogwood every single day?
That's on average, yeah.
On average?
Yeah.
Okay, it's an interesting number. And projected in the year two thousand forty, thirteen thousand three hundred will travel. Okay, why did you guys pick two thousand forty?
When we do the long-range transportation plan, we look thirty years out, twenty-five to thirty years. So because we started this, and we really started talking about this in two thousand ten, so we're looking at the next twenty-five to thirty years, which would equal out to twenty-four.
Is this like a straight-line prediction?
No. I think one of the spreadsheets I gave you actually, well, you might not have had it, but one of the other spreadsheets that we looked at, when we started looking at this data, was of the years from, basically from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand twelve. And as you noticed, when we looked at the data, the data went up and down with the same as the economy, basically. So, you know, it flows per year, but typically, it's pretty similar every year. So almost on all the roads that we seen, so...
So you're predicting three thousand, three thousand additional cars per year in the year two thousand forty, based upon the past or, what are the assumptions that are made in this, just the past? Or, I mean...
There are assumptions based off economic development, tourism. Also, we, you know, put into the system is actually, you know, you know, what will be built in the future. And we worked with Wes. Wes is on our committee. We also have all the planners and some managers from other towns and the county on this committee. And we looked at historical data of what can grow and what can't grow in the region. And it's based off, there's a giant formula that goes into this. And at the end of the day, these are just calculations that we base our predictions on and base our recommendations on for the future, so...
So your VC, therefore, is what calculation is that? Is that like, what, over expected or something, you know, what you have versus what you think you're going to have?
Yeah, that VC is vehicles over capacity, which basically, when you get into the point eight, which I explained in the last meeting, when you get into point eight, basically, you're at what you want for capacity. You don't want to go any higher than that. And as you can see, in two thousand forty, it'll be above one, which is basically saying there's more cars than the actual capacity of the road. Anything above point eight is where you don't want it, and it would be a failing grade for that road system.
So you're basically dividing what you're, you're projected by your existing capacity? Is that what you're dividing to get the point eight?
Yeah, you're taking how many vehicles that are expected on that road and in the capacity of the road? So it'd be the thirteen thousand three hundred over the twelve thousand six hundred.
Okay. Now, you have here two thousand twelve, an estimated volume discussion on East Dogwood, seven thousand three hundred and seventy-two.
Yes, sir.
And that is estimated as, under what basis, because you've got, what are we estimating here? This, what it actually is traveling?
No, these are the, you're looking at the different months, right, sir?
I'm looking at your March, yeah.
Yeah, those numbers right there are, we separated the AADT numbers that DOT has done over the last, since, like I said, nineteen, I think it was like nineteen ninety-three to two thousand twelve. And they divided them by the month. And that's what you're looking at right there. So in March, the estimated average volume in two thousand twelve is seven thousand three hundred and seventy-two. And as you can see, it keeps going up, April, May, June, July. And July is the peak month throughout the county, as we all know. And then it starts going down a little bit in August, and then September, down more. And after that, it goes back to normal, so...
And did you have, like, actual numbers for two thousand eleven?
They do. We can get them for you.
I don't need them, but did you use them as you looked at them?
Yeah, yeah. And actually, for South Dogwood and East Dogwood, I actually, I actually had to do counts for this data. I actually put them out there for, I think we did seven days, twice. And then they put that data into the, into their DOT's calculations to do that, so... Because, for instance, there wasn't any traffic counts for sections of Dogwood, so...
And this group that you have a paper here that you gave us first, did you know about what we got?
Yeah, yeah, I put this together. I wanted to make sure you guys had all the information that we were looking at in our committee when we decided on this data.
So ROW on this one, in feet, Road, what?
Right-of-way.
Road of what?
Right-of-way.
Which one are you on?
I'm now jumping to this Dare County Seasonal Count, multiple-page one that we have.
Yeah, that's spreadsheet two, and if you look...
The last page has got our stuff on it, I guess.
Yeah. And then there's one that says the right-of-way, that's DOT right-of-way. Some of that information is really sort of unrealistic in some spots. You know, as you know, on NC twelve, for instance, a lot of the area in NC twelve, there's sixty-foot to a hundred-foot of right-of-way. But the reality of the sand dunes and whatnot, you know, have started taking over the right-of-way of DOT. So they have the space to, you know, expand some spots there, but that's what right-of-way stands for.
So under this right-of-way one, which is spreadsheet number three, East Dogwood Trail to Seoches Trail, says speed limit thirty-five miles per hour.
Where are you at now?
We seem to have thirty-five mile speed limits in town here.
Let me see.
On the... See over here, spreadsheet three.
Last page, spreadsheet three, to down the two southern shores.
Also, the top of spreadsheet three, and we...
There are two...
I'm sorry. Yeah, there are two. There's a short one and a long one. So we take the long spreadsheet three. We tend to run thirty-five mile speed limits in this town.
Yeah, they're actually forty-five on those two things you've got for Southern Shores.
Yeah, basically, that data, you know, speed limits, you know, they look into that when you do these calculations of what you can travel on the road. It, you know, depends on, some roads are designed better for forty-five, some roads are designed better for thirty-five, and some roads are designed better for fifty-five. And, you know, there's, for instance, you know, one fifty-eight throughout the county. You know, the speed limit ranges between town and town. And, you know, the biggest issue there is not only speed, but, you know, you have a lot of turn-ins and turns-out, and that's what this data calculates into. And another thing that's not on here is, is we actually drove every part of these roads, and we actually counted all the driveways, all the, you know, access points on that road, and that data's put into these calculations, too.
So this speed limit that's in here is an actual speed limit or an estimate based on what the road can handle, or...
The data in here is...
The speed limit, basically.
The data in here is the most up-to-date data that DOT has.
I know, but what is the data? For example, you say on East Dogwood Trail, it says thirty-five miles per hour, where the speed limit in town, anyway, is twenty-five miles per hour. So that's what I'm saying, is this the speed limit based on what people actually drive?
No. You said East Dogwood or South Dogwood?
I'm looking at East Dogwood. This is a...
We're looking at actually Route twelve.
Yeah, on Dogwood, it's twenty, it says twenty-five in our data, or in DOT's data, not my data.
But the actual speed limit posted on that road is forty-five.
Okay, yeah, and some of that data is incorrect, because you've got to remember, NC DOT is the second-largest ownership of road in the nation. So a lot of this data comes from DOT.
But it's not necessarily anything based on what's really happening.
No, and for instance, if you just look at, if we're just going to talk about Dogwood, if you look at that first spreadsheet that I gave you guys, as you can see, Dogwood, you know, Dogwood, the capacity, it's never going to, it's never going to meet the, you know, the capacity. That's just the reality. I mean, as you guys know, the people that do use it, it's either the locals or some tours that know that it's kind of a backway, you know, off of NC twelve. But even with that, the traffic never meets it. So you really don't have to worry about the speed limit. It doesn't make that much of a difference with that one. And as you can see, really, for you guys, really, the major one is, as we've talked about, is NC twelve, is roads that we're going to be looking at, and one fifty-eight coming from the bridge end, so...
I think that's all I need to know. I think I've got it.
So you're now going to take this data, if we agree with this and support it, and come up with a recommendation for what the roads should look like, future changes, future...
These are going to be very basic recommendations, and then hopefully, for instance, one fifty-eight, NC twelve, already in the state transportation improvement program. When we, when we did the prioritization two years ago, we actually didn't give any points locally to those projects. So we wanted to wait until this transportation plan was done, and we can reclassify what the locals and what we thought would be a good recommendation. For instance, you know, one fifty-eight currently is just saying widen, widen multiple lanes. You know, until we use this data and start looking at what we can do for recommendations, we didn't think that was a good description for the road. And so this data is going into that, and we're going to start looking into recommendations for all the roads in our, in the county. And then, once we do that, we'll work with our committee and make sure they're happy with it. And we'll be coming back to you guys to get, you know, to present those to you and to see if you guys are happy with them, so... And at the end of the day, any recommendation that we put in this transportation plan, when we start, when the state starts designing the roadway, which is, you know, about six, seven-year process, it can change depending on funding, environmental issues, local issues, state issues. So the final design will not be in the comprehensive transportation plan. It's just a recommendation that they're going to base off and say, this is what the locals want, this is what the state wants, and we're going to start looking further into that project, so...
But the state has no responsibility for our internal streets.
What'd you say?
The state has no responsibility for our internal street system.
Internal streets, no. NC twelve, yes. One fifty-eight, yes. So, and that's why, you know, like, your list was pretty small for roads that we're really looking into for the state, you know, for the CTP, just because, you know, we're looking at the major roads through the area, so... But when it comes to, you know, local roads, that is a conversation we can have at a later time if there's some issues, and we can sit down with DOT and, you know, your staff and see if there's any things that we can resolve with NC DOT, but not really for this study, so...
Will your study go into anything like stormwater issues, like the Hail of Twelve?
We actually, two weeks ago, the night before I actually presented to you guys, I actually got approved, Kitty Hawk asked the same question. And one of the things we are going to do with the CTP now is, we're going to start mapping out flooding areas on the roads. We did it for Hyde County. So basically, when they start looking at these projects, let's say, for instance, one fifty-eight, you know, we're going to have map out spots where it typically floods more than normal. So when they do look into redoing whatever they need to do for one fifty-eight, they can look at some storm management and hopefully work with the town to fix some of those issues, so...
Good.
And we actually just did that two weeks ago. So probably at our next committee meeting, we'll start having that conversation, start mapping out those spots. So probably the best thing is to let Wes know and let me know, and we can start mapping that out, so...
He certainly knows.
Because, as you know, I mean, we, our whole region's a coastal region. So when we did the Hyde County, it was important for them, and we realized that, you know, we kind of need to map those things out, because, you know, the, people in Raleigh don't know where it's flooding, you know? So if we can map those spots out, so when we start looking at these projects, we can look at some, you know, drain... so when we start looking at these projects, we can look at some, you know, drain issues, so.
How does this committee operate with, I don't know if they're, of current, so-called current projects that the NC DOT is doing, or we think it might be doing, or we're told that they might be thinking of doing, for example, when they send out surveyors and survey the right-hand lane twelve onto one fifty-eight, and tell you that they're going down to the bridge with a third lane, or they're out surveying, saying they're rearranging the corner of twelve and one fifty-eight, and you don't know whether it's going to be an old idea of super streets, or not a super street, or some other combination, and then how is this all interplaying?
Well, there's two folds to that, one is, is like I told you, the RPO itself, we were, we prioritize projects every two years, um, and the last one was two thousand, two thousand eleven, um, and we didn't give any points in Dare County projects, because we wanted to wait till we finished this comprehensive transportation plan, and we worked with all the towns to make sure those projects are correctly described, and so we can take that back to the state and go, hey, this is what we really want, uh, because, for instance, you know, most of the towns weren't really happy with the description of one fifty-eight going through, you know, widening the lanes, I mean, the reality is, is that's, the towns are gonna, aren't going to let that happen, um, you know, and, and there might be, for instance, one fifty-eight, there might be different sections between the towns that might look a little different, you know, there might be a boulevard in one section, there might be, it might just stay the same, um, and that's something that DOT will look into in the future. Um, on the other half, like I said, because we didn't prioritize any points, um, these descriptions that we put into this comprehensive transportation plan will be sent back to Raleigh, and, and, and they'll hopefully start looking into these projects a little more thoroughly, especially NC twelve, one fifty-eight, um, and, and sixty-four, which is on the southern part of the county, and, uh, and so that's kind of how this will be connected, it'll basically be re-describing these projects, and hopefully they'll look into them a little more thoroughly, and, uh, we'll have better options for all the towns in the, in the county, so. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve, I've got a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Go for it.
Um, back on the two thousand four projected numbers for southern shores, you mentioned assumptions, of course, that were used for two thousand four numbers, now, is it safe to assume that the assumption was made that traffic patterns are the same as they are now? Example, no mid-cour tuck bridge was factored into this?
Um, we, right now, the way we're doing the CTP is mid-cour tuck bridges being built, um, January, it might come different, um, and we might have to change some of our, uh, data collection, but, um, right now, we, we, the design that we're looking for is, is with the mid-cour tuck bridge being built, um, and, and, and that will kind of deter some of the traffic, um, but because of the, the way the roadway is designed, uh, in southern shores and duck, and, you know, from NC twelve and one fifty-eight, the, the traffic volume is still always going to be an issue there, so.
Okay, so the thirteen thousand three hundred assumed is based on the assumption that the mid-cour tuck bridge would be there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as, as you know, I mean, you looked at the, I mean, you've probably reviewed the study for the mid-cour tuck bridge, um, they had some recommendations of widening, you know, widening to four lanes in some sections in NC twelve, um, the reality is, you know, I, I don't know if that will ever happen, um, those projects will be, they're not connected, you know, like, they're not the same project as the mid-cour tuck bridge, but those are some recommendations that they put in there to, to help with the traffic flow, but I, I don't know if that will ever happen, but we're planning on that the mid-cour tuck bridge is being built, and, uh, and that's, that these data, this data, this information, the projections are with the mid-cour tuck bridge being built.
Okay.
But just to, just take that idea along, though, so when's your study have to be completed by?
Um, right now, we're on task, our, the DOT engineer, she's actually on maternity leave, but we're on task for probably finishing up within the next year, and probably coming back to you guys, probably next summer, next fall, with our final recommendations, so.
You will know, you will know when the mid, British bridge will not be built.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
So, can you change at that point your projections?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to, I mean, it, it probably will drastically change some of the numbers, especially one fifty-eight and NC twelve, so we will have to, but, and I'll probably have to come back and do the same, show it to you guys with some new numbers, just to make you guys happy, and make, make sure that we're putting the right numbers in, um, but right now, we're planning that the mid-cour tuck bridge is being built, and hopefully it does, and, uh, we'll see, we'll see once, you know, the new, the new election happens, so.
Well, my, my last question is, exactly what action are you requesting of this town council? As far as, which, which numbers are you asking them to concur with?
We're just asking for approval of the data that we're using, the June counts, to put into the AD, AADT, which is, um, which was the first spreadsheet I gave you guys, which would be, let me pull this up here.
The, you, the month of June, is that right?
Yeah, we were, you were using the month of June's data to go into the, the final recommendations, which is, I think it's, uh, spreadsheet three, which was the third spreadsheet I gave you guys, so.
Well, I've got one that says, you've got spreadsheet one on the top right.
Yeah, that's, that's just the month-by-month comparison I wanted you guys to look at, and then, um, but actually, the data that you'll be looking at is actually the, on, where that says the twenty-four AADT, those numbers come from using the June data, so.
No, where is that? What spreadsheet?
Um, spreadsheet one is the, the top one, that has the month-by-month, and if you look down the line, there's the third, the third line, it says two thousand twelve AADT, and that's gray all the way down, and the next one, it's twenty-fourty, that's the data that, that we're projecting using the June specific traffic counts.
Exactly, I'm sorry, we need to craft amendments, what, exactly which column are you asking them to concur with? We're confused, I am, anyway.
The easiest is just doing that twenty-fourty AADT, which is the fourth line.
The fourth column?
Fourth column, after, after this says the jurisdiction, so.
And you're saying you develop that by using that monthly number?
Yes.
For June?
Yeah.
What, what happens if the council were to take an action, make a statement that they have no objection that you use this data?
I think that'd be fine, I'll, I'll, I mean, I have no clue, I'm, I'm doing this for the engineer that's on maternity leave, and I guess I'll find out in a month when she comes back, so, but, um, as long as you guys aren't against it, I think we'll be, you know, fine, if, if there needs to be no action, um, as long as you're not against it, we're okay with that, you know, and that's why we're here, is, is, you know, I really want to make sure you guys know what we're doing, and, uh, what Wes is showing up to and talking with us, so.
So, this is just data, it's no truth.
So, do you want to craft a motion that you think would be...
I, I guess what's troubling is that you've also acknowledged that there are numbers that could be off because the speed limits are really not correct in some of the previous data collections, and I, I mean, I mean, my recommendation to the council as town manager would be that they recognize that there possibly are flaws in it, but that you could use these to come up with a draft that you'll come back to them with in a year, you say?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to be, we're going to be coming back and reporting to you guys with the recommendations, the reality is, is like, this data, I mean, this is the same data that, um, every state, every, you know, municipality uses, and, you know, the same system, and, um, it, it, it's never going to be perfect, but this is the best calculation that NC DOT can put together.
Council, I move that, uh, the town council of Southern Shores, Town of Southern Shores, has no objection to the use of the two thousand forty AADT data as depicted on spreadsheet one, as provided by, uh, Mr. Lambert.
I'll second.
That suffice? Wait a second. Who wants to discuss this, anyone? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same time? You have the numbers, I would say to you that on spreadsheet one, uh, column one, I don't know if it's important to you all, but, uh, they're not roads, they're trails, and I think that follows through, uh, some of the other spreadsheets, too. I don't know if it's important that you identify them specifically as, to their official name.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it, and, and again, I'll be, we'll be back probably within the next six to nine months, presenting some recommendations to you guys, um, and then we'll probably be presenting the, the final plan after that, too, so, um, you know, my, my phone number is open, if you guys have any questions, feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email, so. Wes is usually in contact with me at least once a week, so if you have any questions, send them to him, and I'll get back to you guys, thank you.
Thank you, pleasure to have you here. Council, we turn to our manager and our planner for a discussion of the Southern Shores Cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, I will, I will start out by making some opening comments, and then Wes can chime in and answer any specific questions, um, this is an effort, uh, that was initiated, um, by, uh, thoughts of Councilman Kowalski, and it was certainly long overdue, um, we started out trying to amend the current order, uh, code section pertaining to the town cemetery, as well as updating the town rules specifically for that purpose, the fact that they, we felt like they needed to be updated, and this is the recommendation before you. The recommendation comes in the form of an ord-, a draft ordinance, and I want to make sure everybody, um, understands that the ordinance is really in two parts, uh, one part of it proposes amendment to the actual code section, and the other part, which is basically section seven, um, makes recommendation to, uh, update the actual rules.
You mean article, part seven?
Part seven, I'm sorry, part seven.
Part seven.
Part seven is, is cites the, the actual rules pursuant to state law, and also pursuant to the town ordinance is, uh, the council can adopt rules that fall outside the code section, so you don't have to amend the code section every time you want to change a rule, you can just come in and change a rule, so part seven is a restatement of the rules with our proposed, um, updates to them. Um, I will just say broadly that the, uh, the mechanics of the cemetery, both, both of these were intertwined before, where it was confusing, there were certain code sections that contained what could be perceived to be rules, and there were rules that, um, contained policy statements from the code, so we, we separated that and made the changes basically by amendments to the code section, and then updated the actual rules to conform, and Wes can comment, but I will tell you that the rules, the major changes in the rules are that we deleted any reference to existing town ordinance or state law that was already in place, such as no loud noise, et cetera, um, nuisance, et cetera, so all that's out of the actual rules because we already had that in place to begin with. Um, with that, I can actually ask, solicit your questions, or have Wes, um, comment as necessary, but I would like to thank Councilman Kowalski for his thoughts on this throughout, we did several rehashes back and forth, and also the town attorney has looked at this three times, and, um, made sure that the components that deal with transfer of property rights are legal, and of course, as you know, we actually sell a, a use agreement, a license to use a section of plot, rather than actual deed it over to, to somebody by deed, so that's the main difference in our system of, uh, transfer of property rights in our cemetery. But, um, if Wes has any comments, or if there are any specific questions, we can try to answer them, our, our goal is to, if, if you adopt this, is to take these rules out of part seven when you do adopt, and we'll republish them, hopefully on something that comes out a little bit, um, shorter than this and more readable, is our goal. Wes, do you have any specific comments that you'd like to add to that?
I have a couple of questions, on the, on the ordinance piece, you show, for example, that certain sections are amended, and yet with what we're seeing, and I didn't get a chance to go back to look at the original current ordinance, it looks like we're eliminating those articles, are there some where they're totally just being eliminated? Like, for example, the very first one is definitions, and it says that this, this section ten-one is being amended, when it actually looks like it's being deleted, and I'm just trying to make sure, since I don't have that...
That is correct, it is being deleted, and not, I mean, for, uh, purposes for, I think, immunity code is the way they use it.
I, I assume that, I just wanted to make sure that, you know what happens when I assume.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's, that's the purpose there, and as well as, uh, section or, uh, previous or part five, section ten-five prohibited conduct was deleted in its entirety as well.
And replaced.
Where it also says amended.
And ten-four is eliminated.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I skipped ten-four as well.
Okay, um, most of the questions I have are really with the rules, and some of them are just because of the way I read it, I don't have real strong feelings on it, but I have West Jones. The very first line says, "A certificate of burial, burial rights shall be issued," and it hit me as, what, by the town? I'm assuming the town...
Yes, the town issues the certificates.
Should we say that in there, or is that, me, me, that's superfluous, I'll leave that with you, that was my question. Then went down below, we have the right conveyed by our certificate is for twenty years.
Where, where are you?
In that same paragraph, line thirty-four.
Round thirty.
And it also says down in the next paragraph about how you can do, get an extension. I guess what I'm trying to get at is if someone, if I buy this now and I don't use it for twenty years, I may not remember that I've got to come back to you and get it renewed, do you, is there some provision whereby, if I go by twenty years and somebody else wants to buy a plot, and they, like that particular one, that you sell it, or do you contact them, or how am I supposed to remember fifteen or twenty years later that, guess what, you still have this, do you still want it?
We can get the clerk to comment on the actual practice, what's been going on.
Um, the actual practice is that it is the certificate holder to contact the town with any information that would, um, apply to their lot. Unfortunately, people, um, move away and don't change their address or their lot.
But do you sell it then, if someone else wants one, or, and the reason I'm asking this is because years and years ago, while we were still living there, my husband and I bought a lot up in Washington DC, I doubt we'll ever use it, but I don't know that they've got this rule, so if we decide to use it, we go back, they say, oh, sorry, we sold it because you didn't...
We don't, we don't sell a lot again after twenty years.
Okay, okay.
And they have the right to renew, and they...
Right, I understand that.
...ask us to do that also, but, um, on occasion, we have somebody return a lot, or lots, and they get, um, reimbursed for the amount they pay, then that lot can be resold.
Because you're not necessarily selling it because it's empty, you know, you haven't heard from them, okay, that, that answers my question, now that's the actual practice, um...
But I did sign off recently on a renewal, was that instigated by the purchaser of the lot?
Yes, sir.
Not by you?
Okay. May I, may I comment on, Jody, one second, I just want to make sure everybody's clear, if you look on, uh, page five, lines four, five, and six, the legal mechanism is there, that if some, nothing happens for twenty-five years, that certificate is canceled, it has to by law, so something's got to occur with, either within the initial twenty years, or five years after the expiration for carry to reissue, because otherwise it's going to cancel.
Is there some notification to that person, or, I'm just thinking, people may, they fall in love with southern shores, we come down here for vacations, or whatever, anyway, they end up with it, and then they forget twenty years later, then all of a sudden, somebody passes away, and they think they've got a plot and they build.
And that's the discussion I had with Mr. Hobbs, uh, and, and Mr. Gallup, uh, excuse me, Mr. Gallup, you know, that's the difference in selling a certificate of use versus selling by deed.
Yeah.
It's somewhere you have to draw the line.
Yeah, I understand it, okay.
Um, we don't send out cards each year to plot holders, or anything like that, I, I think that would be an undue burden on administration to have to do that.
You could put an article in the broadcast, didn't you?
Sure. We will, we will definitely do that.
But we also corrected what we had before, which was problematic, which didn't close this up and tighten this, what we had up, so, um, before it was like, there was nothing we had prompted that, so, we tightened it up.
Um, the other question I have, and again, I think this is obvious, but it's on page five, line eighteen, that particular paragraph, saying, "We reserve the right to determine, establish, alter, change, degrade of a vacant lot," does that mean someone's lot? I mean, how, I guess what I, the question I really wrote is, what does this mean? Is that an unsold lot, or...
Well, I, I'll give you the instance of what we just did, by pulling trees out, there was actually some re-grading, and it could have been, we, it wasn't...
There was actually some regrading, and it could have been, we, it wasn't, but it could have been that some of those already had been sold or into license. That reserves our right to reconfigure and make corrections to the grade, even if they're already under, underused. But vacant is the key word there.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Vacant?
Yeah, it's a vacant lot.
Which means unused.
Correct.
Not necessarily unsold, just unused.
Unused.
Yeah. And the other questions I had were answered by looking at the old rules, so I'm okay.
You satisfied with the answers you received?
Yes.
Any other comments? I think we should let the board make a move to approve this resolution, don't you?
Seems appropriate.
Okay, I'll do that. I move to adopt, uh, what are we adopting here?
Doesn't have a number.
Do we have a number? Okay, and ordinance, remanding the code of the ordinances of the town of Southern Shores, North Carolina, which is, I guess, our Southern Shores Cemetery ordinance. Can we use that term?
Yes.
Which would be, we're remanding against the Town Code, Chapter 10, Cemeteries. And that's what we need.
As presented to council as of this date?
Correct. As of council, as of date of 16th of October. Is it 16?
Mm-hmm.
16th of October.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We have it. Thank you, Councilman Kowalski, for your heavy participation and input into getting that thing squared away.
And now fishing is not allowed in cemeteries.
My, my. Agenda item eight alpha, eight A. We turn to the town manager, who wants to discuss general engineering services for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tab six.
Tab six, and I made this request to have this discussion and potential action request in front of the council today. As you may recall, the town has an existing contract for basic general engineering services with Quabell and Associates, which was entered into back in 2007, December 4th, 2007. We currently have four, or several, I'll say, projects. Four are listed in the proposed resolution in front of you that have a consultant engineer or engineers that are not employed by Quabell and Associates. And for various reasons, they were engaged for those particular projects. I included, for your consideration, a copy of the state statutes that address the engagement of engineering firms for engineering services as Chapter 143, Section 64.31 and .32. And it's basically called the Mini Brooks Act. When, when engineering services are solicited, we're supposed to put out an RFP and enter into a contract, except for those services that might be accepted. And under 143.64.32B, you're, the council is allowed to accept projects for whatever reason it wants to, as long as it makes those accepted findings. My recommendation to you today, so I can begin to get a handle on what we've got going on out there, is to adopt the Resolution 2012, Tac 10, Tac 5, which it goes on and exempts the work that's going on associated with the 2008 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for Streets, which we have an engineer engaged that is not an employee or officer of Quabell. Also, number two, a second would be Phase Two of the Canal Maintenance Dredging Project. We have had an ongoing engineer engaged who is not currently an employee of Quabell. And number three, the Tall Pine Bridge Replacement Project, which will be an engineer that will be engaged, who is not an employee of Quabell. And number four, Juniper Trinity Trails Bridge Replacement Project, which we had an engineer, which was the state of North Carolina engineer, who was not an employee of Quabell. If we go ahead and make that finding, that will go ahead and clean up our minutes that those four are exempt under the state statutes from us having to have put out an RFP in the past and engaged Quabell by contract. That is the first recommendation I would make to you in this discussion. The second is, I believe it's time, since so much time has gone by, and there have been changes internally with our current contractee, I would make a recommendation that I be directed to put out an RFP now, again, for general engineering services and see what we get back. Leave the current contract in place with Quabell for the time being, but go ahead and put out an RFP and see what we get back as far as engineering services at this time. So those are the two recommendations I would make to you. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. I know it might be complicated, but the first half really needs to be done to put us in compliance with, with, with the Mini Brooks Act. Have discussed this several times with the town attorney, and he helped me craft this recommendation to you.
Counsel, I move we approve, that Town Council of Southern Shores approve Resolution 2012-10-05.
One second.
Yeah, one second. Is there need for further discussion?
I would just like to make sure that I understand the engineers. Is it okay to discuss who the engineers are that we are, we have?
Yes, it is.
So the capital improvement plan for streets?
We have, we had previously worked with Mr. Anloff, and then he made a change midstream, and we continued to work with him because it was infe, not feasible for us to change at that particular point, nor is it, I believe, proper to you now.
And the Phase Two Canal Maintenance Dredging, the engineers would be?
The same. That is the same circumstance.
The Tall Pine Bridge Replacement?
That is Kimley Horn of Raleigh.
And then the Trinity was the state of?
That's the DOT in-house engineers.
All right, so I learned that.
Could I ask a question, which is really maybe not important, but I'm very confused by this. They pass a state law that says you've got to do this, and then right away they say, oh, but you can just put a piece of paper out and says you don't have to do this. I don't understand that.
Many things about the General Assembly I don't understand either, but.
So there's no real?
There, there is an exception to that that allows, as you can see, agencies and local government to make in, in their discretion, make an exception.
Okay. I thought there was maybe something more behind it. Thank you.
The exception is $30,000 per contract.
Or?
They just set a threshold under which you do not have to comply with the, with the law.
It was the AB that got me. It's, or other particular projects exempted in the sole discretion of the local government stating the reasons therefore. I mean, that just seemed kind of broad. But anyway, that was, I just was curious as to whether there was something specific.
We're going to take advantage of it.
Absolutely, it's there.
I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
So a little should be passed.
Any other comments or questions? We have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We have it done. Now, let's address the matter of advertising for engineering services. Mr. Manager, let's do it again.
Okay. Currently, we have in place your December 4th, 2007 Quabell contract, contract with Quabell and Associates. And you can immediately see from the exhibits the personnel changes that have occurred with Quabell over time. Basically, make, and, and Quabell is, is a good firm. They're here in Southern Shores. I have conversed with them and told them that this recommendation would be made to you at a meeting, but time has gone by and circumstances have changed to the extent that I would proffer that the council should consider putting out another RFP, directing me to put out another RFP for engineering services updated. This contract can be terminated in your discretion with the 30-day notice provision. And I would just say that this, again, this would be for general engineering services. So if we do go out and have another contract, it would be much like this. It would be the instances where we would call up and say, you know, what are your thoughts on this? Can you offer engineering services for this permit, et cetera? So we would be committed to using that firm for those everyday consulting questions and inquiries regarding things that are not associated with these four exempt projects. And it could be, we could, we would take RFP from any qualified firm in North Carolina as the statute sets out. It could be Mr. Anloff, it could be Quabell, it could be all the other various engineering firms, either on the beach, off the beach, et cetera. And then it would be up to, I would bring those back to council for a decision. And meanwhile, this contract, I would suggest to you stay in place.
Do you need a resolu, a, a motion to do that, or is it a consensus?
I would ask that council make a motion to direct me if it's so, if that's what it wants to do.
What, what, will we go out for this RFP? What are we looking for? Cost? Well, I mean, I don't, no, but this, I mean, is that the discussion skills, whatever?
Yes. I, I would offer the, in my, in an RFP that I would draft, it would be qualifications. It would be, obviously, that would be the big one, qualifications and cost.
Professional services?
Yes. Yeah, staff on board, equipment, reliability, all of the above.
I would make a motion that we authorize the town manager to place an RFP to review replacing our existing engineering contract.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Manager?
That is.
I would.
Hold a second.
Can we change it a little bit? Maybe just instead of the term replace, say that we're just seeking?
I said re, I, what I said was go to review the engineers in consideration of potentially changing the contract.
Contract, good. Okay, fine.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion here? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. It's done. Counsel, I have a letter from Rhonda Creef. She was the deputy clerk of Dare County Board of Commissioners. It says, "Dear Mayor Denny, Jody Hess's term as the town of Southern Shores representative on the Dare County Tourism Board will expire on December the 31st, 2012. Mrs. Hess is eligible for reappointment. The Dare County Board of Commissioners request you submit three nominees to fill your organization's seat on the tourism board." We have to submit three, even though we have a representative who served for two years and eligible for reappointment.
Well, we just give them three names, and, and none of the other two don't send anything to them.
But we, we have to send them three applications.
And we don't fill them out, how about that? We send them three names, they don't fill out to the applications and the others.
I don't know.
And they get, maybe they'll get the hint at that point.
I don't know if we can get away with that.
Why not?
The last time, it, I think it was.
Me.
You, and I was one, and Jody was one. I would ask Jody to fill out an application with your approval, of course. And how about?
I think I can just change the date online, re-submit what I submitted last time. How about we do that?
You want to do that?
That's simple.
Okay. I need a third. David, you're good at filling out.
I think I just copy what I had last year.
Now, look. Counsel, get these back to Kerry. Reasonably soon. The Board of Commissioners will be acting on these appointments on December the 3rd, 2012. And just turn them in to Kerry, and she'll take care of the transmittal.
Excuse me, Mayor, who was the third?
Ma'am?
Who was the third?
George and David.
David, thank you.
He will follow up in a week. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As part of my report today, I do have a matter to discuss, to, to solicit discussion from you and potential action, and that is pertaining to the video services. But I wanted to wait till the end of my report on that, if I could, just give you a brief update on other things, and then we'll get to that. I did want to make a comment to you on the retention policy that you adopted today on the consent agenda and discussion that I've had with the other town managers and county manager and county attorney. A part of that policy deals with emails, digital formatted material, et cetera, which is public record. And I just wanted you to be comfortable with our social media practice here. We do have a Facebook page, and we do have a written policy pertaining to the Facebook page, and it's posted on the Facebook page, and occasionally we'll repost that in the stream. But essentially, that is a public record, and we feel confident that we are retaining those, that record in accordance with the state's retention policy. Anybody who ever comes in and says, I want to see all the posts on your Facebook page, et cetera, et cetera, we feel comfortable that we, we are storing those electronically, but we can pull them up.
Forever?
At least within the retention policy time period.
And what is it for that?
That would be, well, we, if it's considered three years, five years, or eight years, we still feel like, we still comfortable it's being stored within any of those time periods. There is one item I wanted you to be comfortable with. The, the policy states that we as staff won't correspond back on the page. And we, and we put that in the policy, and, and that's for a couple of reasons. One is the obvious, we don't want to have a blogging situation. But the second is, we'll create a, if we put something back on there, it creates a public record. And therefore, we just encourage participants on the Facebook page to go about the normal route if they've got a question. So occasionally, you'll see a question on there, when is garbage day, when is big item pickup? And we just will not respond to that. They'll have to call town hall. So I wanted you to feel comfortable with that policy. November 11th is Veterans Day. We will have a ceremony here sponsored by the Knights of Columbus again. It's on a Sunday this year, and the ceremony uncharacteristically will be moved from 11:00 to 1:00 because of church time. They're going to have it at 1:00 o'clock in the afternoon, as I understand it right now. So I just wanted y'all to be put on the alert that that ceremony would take place later in the day, which will be two-hour delay from the traditional time. I did want to comment, Mr. Anloff was in here previously, Chickahawke Trail. We're still running down some punch list items. Essentially, that is finished. We continue with the Three Street project of Deer Path, Gravy Pond, and Spindrift. You can see the progress that's being made daily. The base is being put down on some of the streets now. I wanted to publicly commend Mr. Anloff for his expertise in, in, in public relations. We are encountering the same problems that we had before with citizens being unaware or confused about exactly where their front yard line is and our use of the town right-of-way for stormwater enhancement. And despite all our notifications and despite our neighborhood meetings, we're still having questions arise about those positions. And Mr. Anloff does a great job in, in handling that and meeting with the public, the citizens who, who bring that up. Our town welcome sign, we're waiting on some materials to arrive, and we're ready to pull the trigger on installing the enhancements around the lighting. As soon as our materials arrive, we're ready to go. That is the project that's actually next on the list and has been next on the list for several weeks. I'll try to answer any questions, and then I'll bring up the video, video services if you'd like. Mr. Simon obviously is here filming today, and I wanted to present you, I handed out his proposal, which is his basic proposal for providing video services. I believe when we discussed this earlier this spring, the goal was to. I believe when we discussed this earlier this spring, the goal was to be on, be broadcast by the end of the year. And I wanted to discuss that with you today because we do have one DVD of the previous meeting that is ready to go to GovChannel. And we also will have the DVD today, and they will also be able to be placed on our website via a YouTube link. And that's the same that Kail Devil Hills does, and Kitty Hawk will be engaging in that as well. So all we'll do is we'll have a section on our page for the most current meeting, and then also the links will be archived under a column where the minutes and, excuse me, the minutes and agenda are on the website. But it will be, they'll click, and the viewer will go right to YouTube and see the meeting. That's the way we have it set up. That's the way we're engaged in, ready to go. Your discussions before, I believe, were to film each meeting, including this workshop meeting. You can see the cost, and I wanted to just bring that to you because we would need to engage in a budget amendment if we wanted to proceed with this at this cost. Basically, the cost is $500 per meeting for a one-hour meeting, and then there's an extra cost for each additional hour of $150. So you can apply the math and see what we're looking at for the remainder of the year for two meetings a month. But I wanted to make sure that council was ready to go with this, and we can proceed accordingly. But we just need to have you approve some sort, approve the agreement with Mr. Simon and approve the budget amendment in some fashion. So I wanted to bring that to you for discussion today, to see how you wanted to proceed.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't say it in here, but how soon after, like today's meeting, would it be available for the citizens to see? What's the timeframe?
I'm going to see if Mr. Simon could step to the side and help us, even though he's filming. But I will say, he's told me that he'll, basically, what we had discussed before was a DVD would be mailed to us the next day after the meeting, and when we get it in the mail, we have to then hand-deliver it to Manio. So it would be a matter of two days, presumably. But when we get it, go ahead, Eric.
What if it was Kitty Hawk, it is after the meeting, we could copy that, and send it to the clerk. So that's right, I could have a copy here.
Okay, excuse me. Thank you.
And then, I'd say 24 hours, it could be on our website.
Because we can put it on our website even before we deliver it elsewhere? Okay.
And also, to follow up on that, GovChannel has given Carrie some indication of what day we would be on. Carrie, can you tell them that?
Wednesdays and Thursdays, Wednesdays and Fridays, sorry, but until we really get one to them, so they can find out what the schedule's going to be, they're adding, as you know, they're adding a lot of different things to Channel 20, and so they're kind of re-scheduling things around.
Right.
But I believe we would have a definite time once we start sending them to them.
I presume we're talking like we make a copy, and we just send them a copy, and don't start shuffling the one single DVD back and forth, and aren't about it too much, and they can keep that DVD if they like, and we got the original?
Yeah, we were going to just take what Eric gave us over there and retain the link to YouTube here on our website.
So we don't care about keeping the hard copy?
I give you your copy. So I give you a copy immediately to the channel, and then I'll mail it to the secretary.
Okay, that's fine. Then you're going to have both hard copy and YouTube, so you got double backups.
I'd also like to hear more from the council members. What do you, do you think we really should do two meetings? I mean, I know the discussions, and I know how I feel about it, but I'm just curious as to what the rest of you feel about doing the every meeting, or just the first meeting of the month, or what are your reactions?
Mine is basically, the idea was to have the recording of our meetings, not, you know, this is going to be an hour-long meeting for $500 bucks, and this is an hour and a half, so let's not call them, because they spend the $150 bucks, and, you know, do that kind of, it's like, we're going to do meetings, we do meetings, and people get to see our meetings. So it's like, this is what it costs, we set it all up for that, so we go for the meetings.
I agree. I absolutely think we should.
I do, too. I just wanted to hear you say it.
Record all of our meetings and make them available to the public.
I just wanted to hear you say it, okay?
Well, I did. Thank you.
I agree.
So do you need a motion or two?
Well, it's two.
One for the budget amendment? Oh, there you go.
He needs two.
Okay.
I move, Town Council of the Southern Shores authorizes the town manager to execute the agreement with Nomis Productions, as presented to council as on this date.
I'll second.
Second, you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay, it's approved. I move approval of Budget Amendment Number Two, which funds the contract that we have just directed the manager to accept.
One second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same side. I don't have anything on my mind, counsel. Counsel with law, do you have something?
I have nothing, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How about counsel and say?
Nothing, sir. I do.
Surprise.
Surprise. The, two things, I have two things that are related, both to the cemetery. And on Page 33 of the audit, I think we discussed this initially, and I need to have my mind refreshed, on the Southern Shore Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund that's monitored by the Outer Banks Community Foundation, and there's $5,000 that was put in in December 2005, and they have full authority over the management of this fund. Have we ever figured out what they're going to do with this, don't do with it, or anything about this section?
We get an annual, annual grant, so to speak, from the community fund of around, approximately $500, just to return from the, from the, from the community foundation.
So returning that $5,000 to us, is that's what's happening?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the way the community foundation funds are set up.
So it's roughly seven years, and it's roughly got $3,500 back on this whole scenario in total? Do we know that?
No.
So we get back $500 a year?
Yes, we get back a grant of $500 a year from that fund.
So it started in 2005.
Doesn't that include from principal plus earnings?
I'd have to go back and look at the agreement with Outer Banks Community Foundation, but that's basically how it works. We get a certain amount in the form of a grant each year back from them, which is either P and I, or I, you know, interest or whatever, but...
That goes back into the cemetery fund?
Yes, it does.
I, I wasn't around when this was set up. I don't think it was. What was the purpose? Does anybody know?
The purpose was, what this says is to set up maintenance.
Yeah, I know.
Because at that point in time was to, basically, Public Works is doing our maintenance now.
That's right.
And at the time it was discussed, it was also talking about, you know, putting in the road, which you have since done. So that's basically what, when you say what the fund was for, that's basically what it was for, to make it self-sustaining, so the monies would not be coming from the town's general...
Well, that's my point. If we want to create a fund from which the earnings can sustain the cemetery, we've got to think of a lot more money than $5,000. So I'm wondering if it's worthwhile to even keep the fund in there.
Oh, I think that's what we should explore, you know, I agree with you.
Yeah, and I agree, that's something we need to think about. I'm sure during each budget year, Bonnie's done a good job, I think, in bringing that up, that we don't create a separate budget for this fund, we've just been operating the expenses out of Public Works. And it may be that council wants to demarcate that better next year, or more clearly next year, if we want to do that. I don't know. That's something we certainly can talk about.
You have a fund balance of $41,000. Is that part of, is that a line item in Public Works that I don't remember anymore?
No, they don't, we don't show the fund balance in their budget. Basically, what we do is we have line items of expenses in their budget.
It's showing under the non-major fund, it's a signed cemetery fund, is $42,557. This is on Page 13.
That's what I remember.
I mean, it's, it's just the basic, there's the fund, and it's, we don't budget from that fund each year. We've done a couple of budget amendments from it, as you recall, for different specific items that Public Works did not have in their general fund budget.
Okay. So we're going to check into that, just to see...
Well, I mean, we can, I mean, we can propose in our budget plan, in a separate cemetery budget next year, if we'd like to do that, and set it up from that fund.
Well, if it started at $5,000, and it's now up to $42,000, I think what I'd really like to know and be reminded of is what were the details of that fund?
Okay.
You know, what was it said that it could or could not be used for, and then we can make the decision to do what you're talking about.
We will have a briefing on the history of the funding of the cemetery fund at our next meeting, if y'all would like to do that.
That's fine, that's good. And the second thing I have is cemetery also, but didn't we discuss somewhere that we plant around that cemetery sign, the new cemetery sign, put something down in front of it also? Because the old sign had that bushes, et cetera, there, so we had discussed that, we'll do something with that sign.
We did discuss that, and I'll check with Public Works to see where that is.
Right, that's all I have.
Can I back up one second on the briefing of the cemetery fund? I wanted to see if we could make that the next work session meeting, instead of the nightly meeting.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good. All right. Super, that's all I have.
Counsel, I move that we enter into closed session.
You didn't let me mention mine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one, I just have one thing to mention, since somebody brought up the tourism board.
You can climax it with a move.
Okay. When I mentioned the tourism board, I want to remind you that this Saturday is the first seafood festival down at the, the old Wind World Point property, and it looks like it's going to be a really, really nice affair, so just to remind everybody of that. And I move that we go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318, Point 11A1, to review and approved closed session minutes.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Right. We're in recess for five minutes.